Good evening and welcome to the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board Work Session for Tuesday, the 28th of June. Ms. Kirby? Oh, no, sorry. Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Hines.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here. You see, if we skip a week because we've delayed this meeting, I forget how to do things.
Yes.
Okay. Next, I would like a motion to consider the consent agenda, please.
I motion that we consider the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay. Anything we want to discuss on this consent agenda? There's rather a lot on it. The only thing that drew my attention was that there's four contracts that are being renewed and sort of moved over a little bit so that they line up with an August 1st start the way everybody else's contract does. Is there anything else that has grabbed anybody's attention?
I did want to mention that there are several year-end financial items on here that you do only see once a year, and that's one of the reasons we moved the meeting back a week. So I appreciate that because we were, until about 4:30 today, trying to get the details of all that into the system here. And over the weekend, software update did not help our cause at all.
Oops.
Everything is here, so, you know, from stale checks to advances to the transfers to all those year-end kinds of things that we need to do. So appreciate everyone moving that back a week for us.
So we're ready for the end of the fiscal year, which happens very soon?
This, yes.
Okay.
Within days.
Great. Yes, please.
I had one position on here for a resignation is Quatrice James, who was the principal of Fairfax for seven years. She's done a tremendous job there and really has served the district and the students and families well, so we definitely wish her well in her next endeavors. And just really want to note her stewardship of the Fairfax community and schools, so.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, then Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Okay. And now, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have our work session, and the focus of the work session is going to be an academic update for Semester Two. We are sharing data in three areas, and so our presenters tonight have worked very hard to present and collect data around grades, attendance, and early literacy. We wanted to make sure that we were presenting data that was comprehensive. There's lots of data coming in over the summer, and we'll be revisiting and, of course, having additional data sessions in the fall. So I want to thank our presenters tonight. They've been doing many, many things this past month. It is a super busy time in the board office and excited to share information on where we are in those areas. So I will turn it over to Dr. Gould and our Director of Data, Allison Byrd.
So, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Good evening, everyone. As Superintendent Kirby shared, we'll be sharing our Semester Two academic data with you on this evening. And so we're going to get right into our presentation. So as always, we start with our strategic plan for 2026 and what our mission is. And this evening, the goal areas that we will focus in on are one, two, three, and four. We're going to highlight some things in all four of those goal areas. We're going to leave the fifth goal area for Scott Gainer to do all the highlights there. And so we have our mission definitely about our challenging and engaging education and preparing our students definitely to be responsible citizens and succeed in college and career. Our goals for our presentation for this evening are to really take a look at the strategic plan goals and how, and the key performance indicators. As Superintendent Kirby alluded to, the indicators that we're going to be looking at tonight are attendance. We're going to look at it year-to-date. We're also going to look at chronic absenteeism around attendance. For instruction, we're going to look at early literacy and course completion and grades. And then we'll talk a little bit after each one of the items that we share this evening in regards to district trends, challenges, and some of the next steps. The slide here that I have before you outlines the strategic plan and what we call the One Plan areas of focus. The One Plan is a plan that we submit for federal dollars. And in submitting that plan to the Ohio Department of Education, we must outline needs assessment and priority areas. For the 21-22 school year, our focus areas were attendance, literacy and mathematics in the content area, and looking at our special populations. Special populations deal with students with disabilities, EOL students, gifted students, sometimes homeless students, dropout prevention, any of those areas that deem necessary for us to pay attention to within our school district. And when we talk about special populations, we're not talking about it in a separate category, but what it looks like across those two other focus areas that we have, attendance and, as well as the content areas of literacy and mathematics. So the first item that we're going to share with you this evening is attendance rates. Our goal for this school year was 91%. And the reason that we're at 91% because we're looking at this over our five-year strategic plan, working up to the goal of 95%. So the goal this year would be 91% as we progress in the next five years. So we're going to take a look at this and how it impacts our strategic plan. The strategic plan area of focus is definitely to look at the 95% of the district students graduating in four years. And so we'll start by looking at and increase that attendance for all students pre-K to 12. So I'll turn it over to Allison, and she's going to start with the attendance rate and looking at the progression over several years.
Correct. Thank you. So as Dr. Gould indicated, we will begin by looking at our attendance rate. So we'll start by looking at it at the district level over time. This measure in particular looks at who should be in attendance and for how long compared to what their actual attendance is. This is a measure that we have been monitoring for many years. So you see, it starts with in 2016, 2017, well before the impact of COVID. Please note that in 2019, 2020, that was the year that we experienced COVID for the first time, and we had a statewide school closure starting on March 16th. So it's why 1920 has the asterisk with it. We were told by the Ohio Department of Education to mark students as present, so that's why you see that slight bump for 1920 school year. In 2021, this school year, we were fully remote through about mid-January, and then students and families received the option to start attending school in a hybrid format. And then we have school year 2122, and the options for participation were either fully in-person or fully remote via Tiger Virtual Academy. So the first charting here, we're looking again at attendance rate over the course of the year in three-week increments. And then looking at each one of the school years, 1920 is indicated by the light gray, school year 2021 in the darker gray, and then our current, school year 2122, in the golden rod color. What do we want to see when looking at a graph like this? We want to see a staircase up or moving as close to 100% as possible, or a plateau in the 90s or higher showing that the rate is remaining relatively the same and on a higher end. What do we actually see? Even in 1920, prior to COVID, we see the staircase going down, but the values of the attendance rate still remains in that 93, 95% range. In 2021, when we started off, and again, half of the year was fully remote before transitioning into the hybrid environment, we see our attendance rate ranged from 88.9 to 91.1. And then to the current school year, and again, in that golden rod color, we see the attendance rate ranged from 88.17 to 91.99. Now, one of the positive pieces here that you don't see in the other year, or last year in 2021, is that while we saw the decline at the start of the year, we did see a pickup once we got through the winter recess. We made some policy changes, had adjustments in the number of days for quarantining, and then we see the attendance rates begin to pick up again.
Which week corresponds to winter break approximately?
So Week 18 represents, actually, I can click on it in the lower left-hand corner here. So Week 15 is marked by the end, or Friday, December 3rd. So that would have been two weeks before break, students return from winter break, and Week 18 marks that first week in for January 7.
So that's the beginning of January, then?
Yes.
All right.
So you have an 87.1% attendance rate, and it's the yellow line I should be looking at. We don't have anything close to 80. I mean, they're all above 88. So is this, is the 87?
No, wait a minute.
That's the 2122?
So the...
You're always the average lower.
When we are looking at the golden rod, so Week 36 is not quite the end of the school year. We do have, I think the school year ended Week 39. And what you're seeing with the 87.0, I actually pulled that from ODE, and I should have had an asterisk there, is that we're still reporting information to the department. So I use the value that was reported by ODE, but I think Superintendent Kirby even said during the summertime is a time where we start to clean up the data. So that is the raw number, but I would expect it to be more in the 90 range. So that was just an error on my part, including that number as the overall.
When it's all cleared up, can we just get it in a report so Liz can give it to us on weekly?
Absolutely.
And also, I guess, wherever on it, does this include the quarantine, the kids that are in quarantine?
Yes. So our attendance rate is, again, it just looks at when students are expected to be in school compared to when they actually are. So it includes or will reflect any absences, whether excused or unexcused, or, you know, within the control of the student and the family or not.
Okay. I'd love to be able to touch upon that when you're done with your presentation.
Does this include attendance from kids who are in Tiger Virtual Academy, so whether or not they signed on?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
The next measure that we're going to look at is the chronic absenteeism rate. So this is one that is actually included on our state report card, and it focuses on students who are absent or missing 10% or more of their scheduled school time. This would also include both unexcused and excused absences. So medical appointments, extreme, you know, medical challenges, students on quarantine, whether they had COVID or were exposed to it, other personal illness, college visits, all of those things would be included when we're considering chronic absenteeism. We want this value to be small, the closer to zero, the better. And we can see our absenteeism rates over time from the district level. This slide includes just a couple of reminders, because when we think about 10% of a student's school year, that's as few as two days a month. And because it includes both excused and unexcused absences, it's understandable to see how with, when families aren't aware of this, or issues like quarantine, things outside of the family's control are included in the student's attendance rate, it can be easier for a student to be identified as chronically absent. On the right-hand side, there's a reminder that, of course, absences and attendance is important across all grade levels, but especially in the early elementary grades when our foundational literacy and numeracy skills are being developed. So that charting just says, like, when students are, when they miss fewer than nine days in kindergarten and grade one, we see 64% of students reading on grade level after third grade. When students miss 18 days in just one of those years, which would be equivalent to 10%, that reading on grade level drops to 41%. And when they are chronically absent in both kindergarten and first grade, their success rate at reading on grade level by the end of third grade drops to 17%. So again, it certainly makes sense, but we can use that to have an understanding of how significant an impact attendance is, especially at those early grades.
So, I'm sorry. Actually, no, that's exactly where I want to be. 46, 45, 46% for the final 15 weeks of the year. Help me understand that, because that seems like such a massive number. I wonder if it's possible.
It is possible. That's what the data indicates. We can take a look at it by grade band. That may help. So when we're looking at this slide, we can see the rates across the elementary grades. The time that's highlighted, so each bar represents six weeks. So for example, kindergarten, we see it Week Six, which is October 1st for the 2122 school year, 26% of kindergartners had missed 10% or more of their scheduled time up to that point.
Which you said could be two days a month.
Correct. Correct.
But on the previous graph, the one that Dan questioned, I mean, wouldn't it build? Because when someone is, I mean, everybody starts off with zero, and as people sort of build to get this chronic, you know, their 18 days, it seems like the majority of those kids hit that 18 days in Week 21, and then they're now chronic, so that number doesn't...
For the rest of the year.
Yeah, for the rest of the year. So it'll plateau like that, if I'm reading this, if I'm reading this right.
So if I had COVID in January, I'm going to be listed as before there was a change in the requirement to stay out, because I think it was in Janu... When was it? Was it in January that we left the 10-day mandatory?
I said that was when Omicron hit. That was in January.
But there was also a...
I think it was more like March when we shortened it.
Was it March when we shortened?
Like March when we shortened the timeframe.
So if I had COVID in January, and I followed all of the protocols, I stayed out the entire 10 days, that was the right thing to do, I'm on these, I'm on this bar for the rest of the year, for the most part?
Yes.
If you, you would definitely be on there in January, and then in order to come out, you would have had to have been enrolled for the entire year and have pretty much perfect attendance through the remaining of, the remainder of the year. And we do actually have some stats. We know that we created an attendance marker called Quarantine at Home. And we do know, and Dr. Gould will speak to this, that there were over 1,600 students who had that attendance marker. I mean, so we're talking about quite a few days and quite a few students impacted across the schools. Then we did need to make an adjustment and work to provide some connection between school and home, having students check in. So there was a remote quarantine, or remote access for quarantine students, which impacted another 600 or so students. So it is safe to say, like, we thought that with the start of the 2122 school year, you can see we actually were, our attendance was the highest for the year, that we would, you know, see an improvement in the overall attendance, but given the exposure that did have a great impact on our rates overall.
1,600 kids having that quarantine code is a third, that's a third of our kids.
A third of our base, right.
When we look at the middle grades, we can see that eighth-grade students maintain the highest rates of absenteeism, with seventh-grade students having the lowest rates. And then looking at it at the high school level, instead of looking at it by grade, we look at it by their expected year to graduate. And we see higher rates for the graduating class of the cohort of 2022, and the lowest rates for the freshman class of 2025.
Okay, so I've asked you where winter break falls. Where does spring break fall in these week numbers?
Spring break was the end of March, which would be, it's not directly reflected, Week 27 marks March 11th.
So spring break...
So it was in between Week 27 and Week 30 that's indicated here.
Okay.
So some of our end-of-the-year data takeaways that Allison has highlighted for us. We show an increase in the year-to-date compared to the end of Semester One. So that is us comparing ourselves from the beginning of the year until January. That's our Semester One. Of course, we see that our chronic absenteeism has increased over the second semester, and that's pretty much where a lot of the questions have come in. But our overall, despite the challenges, our first-year goal of being at 91%, we see that our attendance rate for the daily rate is around 90.21. So we're very close to what our goal was that we set for this year. Some of the challenges, we've talked about this a little bit, is that COVID not only impacted our students but also our staff. So we see an attendance trend happening there as well. We also went back and looked at many of our data views that we have in Infinite Campus to make sure that we align them to our key performance indicators, making sure that principals were able to see exactly what they needed to see as they were working toward their attendance goals as well. Allison has already shared that the quarantine of home is the fourth-highest code for excused absences during this year, impacting over 1,600 students in our district. And we also had to put in place an education protocol. And then that education protocol, it was what do we do with students who are at home while they're quarantining, making sure that they could still access their education? And with the establishment of the Tiger Virtual Academy, with it becoming a school this year and actually extending our application deadline, it also had an impact on our attendance as well, because many families who had been accepted to Tiger Virtual Academy would not show to their neighborhood school until they, until they actually, TBA actually started.
Let me ask you just to briefly touch on some of the other attendance challenges of TBA, just anecdotally, because we're going into application season, and we're going to have to put some parameters in place for people applying.
So one of the biggest things is that we definitely have to adhere to the deadline for TBA. If the application opens on February 1st and we say that we're going to close on July 31st, we have to really adhere to that, because then we have to have students actually enrolled and be ready to start in August. We don't want to extend that. We want to make sure that everyone knows where their placement is as well. In regards to attendance protocols, really taking a look at how we actually take attendance for TBA, that has been very challenging for our staff and our students. Because when you think about students who are in the elementary grades, it is them uploading their information and logging it that really captures that attendance for us. And in order to do that, we have to have someone who can actually assist someone in grades K through 5, and even sometimes in our middle school, with helping students to actually do that as well.
How many students did we have in Tiger Virtual Academy?
This past school year, we had 300-plus students in TBA. This past school year, we had three hundred-plus students in TBA.
I'd be curious, when, is the registration finished yet for next year?
No, we're going to open it up on July first. So right now, everyone has enrolled back to their home school.
Got it.
And then we will actually open the application up.
I'll be interested to see data on that, and also how many, how many people are coming back.
Yes. And I'm curious, did we see much of a change in January, when, you know, that was when Omicron and people were very concerned about sending their kids back to school? Did we see any uptick, or no, around that time?
We did have some students who did stay, because we asked if you wanted to stay in the school, and also we had students that actually joined during that time as well.
Okay.
And so that's when that attendance got impacted, because people were saying, "I'm in TBA, so I don't have to come to the home school."
So this is one thing that we're tracking, because, I just have a couple of things to say here about TBA. One, the attendance is very tricky, and so if students don't do what they're supposed to do in a timely fashion, it's an absence. So we know that that's also under those numbers. Two, you know, we're seeing that as we start to kind of look at some of the available data, it might not be the best for younger kids from a developmental perspective. And three, just to provide perspective, you know, there are districts who are starting to drop their virtual academies. So we're not doing that, but we want to make sure that it's a school that is serving those students who are interested, you know, for sure. And there's some specific habits that you have to be able to commit to in order to be successful. We don't want to set students up to not be successful with the virtual program. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to say that because it does connect to the attendance challenges.
Well, I'd like to add, just from my personal perspective, I mean, I don't... Okay, so the state has these measures, and they have this chronic absentee measure, okay? Just knowing that we had COVID this past year, whatever numbers in that report card, I don't care about. I mean, it's an anomaly. It doesn't matter. I would almost rather have us have our own number that maybe excludes the COVID stay-at-home if we're finding ways of teaching those kids while they're at home, if there's some plan for that. I also look at the Tiger Virtual Academy, I mean, I think people do want flexibility, and, you know, let's say a family tries to sign up on August eighth, okay, because they didn't get any of the announcements, or they're a new family too, to the district, but the application process stopped before they moved into the district, but now they can't do Virtual Academy because it already passed the July thirtieth deadline. If we, if we have this deadline because of, we have to get the numbers into the state, and it's going to affect our state number, I personally don't care about that, because I've sort of given up on the state report card. That's me speaking, okay? I know I'm maybe, nobody has to agree with that, but, you know, I would like, I'd feel bad if our families were hurt, because they didn't have the flexibility to move around, and the only reason we have this is because we have to get them into our system in time during the summer session before it starts in August. So I don't care if there's some flexibility. Now, if there's other administrative issues, and I'm...
And academic issues.
Yeah, they're likely might, okay? And if we see, and just sort of also picking back on a statement that you said, if we see that we have kids that are choosing this option, and maybe K through three, and we just know it's not right, then let's just not do it in K through three, and get these kids in the classroom where we know they're going to be better served. So, I mean, just my own feeling.
In a future, you know, superintendent's report, I'll talk a little bit more about TBA.
That's great, okay.
What was the percentage of our younger scholars in TBA this past school year? Was it a high percentage, or was it a...
From the, you mean, a percentage of enrollment that was at TBA?
So of those three hundred per elementary or three?
I'll pull it, so it was under, given the overall enrollment, it was less than ten percent, so...
Yeah, I was going to say it wasn't a lot, but we'll go back and get the numbers.
I can get you the exact numbers and the distribution across the grade levels.
That'd be great. I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
I will say, Superintendent Kirby, I know you mentioned you would have some more detail related to TBA, but I do want to add, just from the data perspective, when we're thinking about the start of the school year, it's not just reporting to the state, it's getting students connected to their content. So it does, there is a slight delay in building their schedules, finding out what they need, getting them connected to the online content, having the, reviewing attendance practices and work that needs to be done, what that looks like. So a lesson learned from this year is that takes more time, and some practice for both the families and the staff to make those connections. And then we'll also see, as we transition to the early literacy component, the state has changed some of the timelines for beginning-of-the-year assessing, which would also impact when students start school.
So one of the things that we also want to see with our attendance practices is something that is consistent across all of our schools. So when we think about our multi-tiered systems of support, and we think about this from an attendance lens, if you take the tier one in the universal area, we really want to build those foundational whole supports that we have for our schools. Right now, each school has an attendance action plan that they have begun, and has action steps and goals around what they're going to do in order to reach the set key performance indicator. In the area of tier one, we would have improving our communication with our parents and families. We really want to define exactly what attendance looks like and means and feels like at our schools, so that families truly understand, and we don't get into that situation of missing two days and ending up in that chronic absenteeism area. Continuing to share weekly data attendance trends, this is something that we do with school leaders every week. They know their data from a weekly standpoint. We share, we share trends with our principals. Allison and I hold bi-monthly meetings with the principal, the attendance secretary, the counselor, and the social worker, all to talk about what is happening in the building and what those supports look like for attendance as they work through their goals and action steps. Also making sure that we continue to follow, if there is anything that, let us not say it out loud, pandemic three-point-oh monkeypox, that anything would happen where we should have to quarantine again, that we actually have an education protocol in place already for our students if we have to quarantine them. And to continue and review any attendance codes that we may need for the future as we look at this, and any data views that are related or impact any school needs that are needed for schools to look at, and making sure that we really look at research-based practices. We've looked a lot at Attendance Works and looking at what they're doing, because Attendance Work has done this work for years across many school districts, so several of our school buildings are definitely implementing many of those strategies. When we take a look at tier two, we're looking at our students who are in that ten to nineteen percent. We already know who our habitual and truant students are. So we are really at an advantage of really knowing that in advance. Principals know that, and we have also shared that information with the other support staff in the building, so we know what we have to put in place and order. This is where some of our academic success coaches are coming in, some of the tutoring that we're using. Many of our counselors and our administrators already have some type of plan in place for these students, so that we hit the ground running. Some of our orientations, we're making sure that we tailor and target them so that they're there at the beginning of the year to participate in that. And when we get to our very intensive tier of intervention, this is when it goes into many of the attendance plans that social workers do, because then this becomes an area where you're actually really working with that family and the student to really get them in, and also providing them with some support. So this is the way we want to look at it from a consistent attendance practice across our district.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I mean, you have these categories of, so there's a flag on someone's, you know, someone's not there, and there's some reason, anecdotal reason on why they're not there. I mean, are you able to drill down to a particular student and actually look at that data, and actually sort of come up with some theory of why they're being late? I mean, is it an issue, I mean, is it an issue of transportation, for example? Or is, you know, this, is it an issue of, okay, the pandemic? Because mediating that seems to be, I mean, it's a constant transportation problem, you know, Liz Kirby can get in her car and make sure that that student is there on time. Just kidding, okay?
I was going to say technically, she could not. She's not supposed to transport anyone in her car, but that's okay.
But, but, don't do that. But do we know the reasons?
Yes. Yes, we can drill down and see exactly what is happening with students. Our attendance secretaries that we have in the building, I must say, with having them in our attendance meetings, they are phenomenal. They can tell you things about families. They really know what's going on, so that really helps us be able to create those plans. We don't hear a lot about transportation, I would say, from a school district perspective. A lot of times, it's transportation that may be dealing with the family in itself, with something happening to a car, the time that a parent goes to work, older sibling having to drop someone off, those are the things that we hear around transportation.
And Dr. Gold gave kudos to the attendance secretaries, but we've also had an opportunity to work much, much more closely with our school social workers.
Yes.
Who can run through every single family, like what's happening, what their needs are, and they've done a phenomenal job in advocating for those families, you know, like Mr. Pasher indicating, you know, is it an issue with transportation? Can we use a different coding for families that we know might, might be homeless, where transportation is a challenge? So through the meetings that we've been holding with them, and they're sharing in their work with the families, we have learned a great deal down to the, to the individual level.
So it seems like the, not the counselor, but the social worker is a real critical piece to this. Now, their bandwidth, do we have enough of them, for example? Or is there a bandwidth issue where they can't address all the students?
They will say...
Complicated question.
Yes, a complicated question.
Doesn't need to be answered right now.
Yeah. But they do, because they are also mandated, they have a law that they have to have in place in order to also look at attendance as well, there's a lot of things around them going to court, they have to do attendance plans on all of these, so they are really following up with those families who are in that tier-three intensive piece.
Okay.
So they work very closely with them.
That's the answer I was looking for. Perfect.
It's a, it's a, attendance is an incredibly difficult challenge, you know, in the school setting. It, you know, I had a student this year who has had, has very significant special ed needs, and also missed literally half the year, just sporadic, back-to-back. The state of Ohio has taken away a lot of our ability to, to force kids and families in, because the requirements, the consecutive day requirement, people know how to, how to game that, if you will. But there's also real problems, and this is one of those areas where our community and schools, schools in the community network is going to pay great dividends. The fact that we have social workers in our buildings, remember, is a real luxury, and it's one of those things that people sometimes say, "Well, why does it cost, why is Cleveland Heights University spending so much money?" We're spending so much money because we are actually meeting the needs of our students. And, you know, when you have families who have a choice to make, that on Wednesday, you know, either mom or dad's not going to go to work, or the junior in high school is going to stay home to look after the little ones. And families have these dilemmas, where it's either somebody gets to work a shift, or somebody else gets to go to school. You know, and so these are real problems that, that people in all communities face, but in, in districts that are majority poverty in particular, it's just, it's a heavy burden on, on many of our families. So it's, you know, kudos to those principals, to those social workers, to those families who are trying like crazy to do it, but can't always quite do it.
And again, I would just highlight, you know, despite all of our challenges, we still were at ninety-point-two-one percent.
One thing here, if I could, can I just talk about this? We did at the end of the year, last quarter campaign of competition with the schools to see who could, would have the best attendance overall, and it was a bi-weekly competition. We didn't really think it was going to be a huge deal, but it actually became a very huge deal for the schools. Really, you know, very competitive, and, you know, I have like a whole bunch of pictures of people with their trophies, with their kids with trophies, you know. A lot of the schools won over the course of it, and at the end of the year, there was a ice cream truck social for the winners too as well. And the high school kids actually were really into it. So we wanted to just kind of use, and that's one of the, the research-based practices from Attendance Works around doing attendance, so kind of wanted to pull from that. And then the other piece of feedback we've received from, from administrators is, you know, doing a district-wide campaign around attendance. I even remember, maybe it was, you know, last summer, talking to Reaching Heights around kind of partnering with this too as well, so this is something we can revisit, just to kind of, you know, like, get people back into the normal school kind of rhythm and mindset, but also, you know, sharing information about, you know, the impact of attendance. A lot of times, people aren't even aware that they're chronically absent, because, you know, if it's spread across the school year, you know, it's just not on your radar. So we're kind of thinking through ways to make it district-wide and really, you know, do a big kickoff too.
Do they still have the little perfect attendance awards at the elementary level? I remember my kids coming home with...
Yeah, they do.
A little printout that they were very excited about. And it's like, well, that, in my world, that was like the base-level expectation, show up, right? But obviously, that can be a huge challenge, so make that victory, you know, something that's celebrated.
Fifth-grade promotion ceremony, so I remember it was spoken at.
And Superintendent Kirby, you know, she kind of downplayed this, but this was really a big deal. I mean, them being able to get this trophy and show it off, that it even pushed the principals to start having like grade-level competitions within their building, and even at the high school level, they tied it into getting prom tickets, extra graduation tickets, all of those things, so it became a big deal.
It was reported in the newsletter. We would look at it every week.
Yeah.
That's, that's really good to share with us. I mean, that's, that's, as a board member, really love to hear that anecdotal thing.
If there are opportunities for you all to participate in the campaign next year, I would certainly like to hear that.
Please use us, absolutely.
One of the things I really was struck by was when I was up at Imani Temple, and the church was giving awards to students for their perfect attendance for the month.
At their school, even though they, it was a church.
Yeah, the parents, it was self-reported by the parents, but I thought that that was really nice, that, you know, now a community, you know, based organization, religious organization, is rewarding students for perfect attendance at school.
And they were, they were being recognized, and they got a prize.
They got a prize, something, yeah, they were called up front, and they got a prize, and I thought that that was amazing, and if there's ways to help and send, or, you know, if we're going to do a campaign on attendance and why it's important, we could do an outreach to organizations about doing something, you know, to help partner on that. It is really important.
You know, last time I checked, we meet once a month. We could have perfect attendance kids, we could recognize them at our meetings.
Do we get perfect attendance too? Sorry. But that would be cool.
Yeah, that would be nice. And I do know that, like, there were...
It's another excuse to get kids in front of us, and we love that.
There were posts, I know, that, you know, people generally were just making about how with COVID, it was so hard to get your kids up and back into the rhythm of getting ready for school and getting there on time. And I know even adults have, you know, expressed that that was hard, going back into offices, getting up, getting ready, getting there, you know. As a society, we kind of fell out of practice of doing that.
I wonder, Liz, if we could, maybe our first board meeting after the start of the year, recognize all the perfect attendance students from, from last year.
They would love that.
Yeah, but, I mean, we should be celebrating that, and I would love to... Yeah, but I mean, we should be celebrating that, and, and I would love to celebrate those kids. And it'd be a nice way to start the year.
So now we'll switch hats. We're gonna move into early literacy. And when we think about our ninety-five percent of students graduating in four years, a lot of times people don't think about early literacy as being one of those key performance indicators. But it is a key performance indicator as we take a look at grades K through three here. We're gonna be looking at some Acadiance data, and Acadiance data is used with teachers in order for them to truly understand the challenges that their students may have or may not have when it comes to those early reading skills.
So we've talked about early literacy performance, but I'll give a little background on what we're talking about when we use that language. So each year, schools are required to assess the reading status of students in kindergarten, grades one, two, and three. We must do this using an assessment that's pre-approved by the Ohio Department of Education. Here in Cleveland Heights University Heights, we use a tool named Acadiance Reading. You'll sometimes hear it referred to as Dibbles Next. Testing must occur by September thirtieth of each school year for students in grades one, two, and three. And starting in school year twenty-three, so this fall, all kindergarteners must be assessed within the first twenty days of school. So for the twenty-three school year, that would be September twentieth. The reading status can, for students can either be on track or not on track, and that's determined based on the overall score earned on Acadiance. And we refer to that as the composite score. So the table that is displayed here shows the percentage of students organized by grade level who are on track. And we see this data for multiple school years, and we have used the same tool for multiple years. When looking at it, there's a couple of different things that we can, can focus on. So we can use an apples-to-oranges comparison and looking at different cohorts of students over the years. So if we're looking just at kindergarten in school year twenty-twenty-one, again, when we started off, so we were fully remote then, and our Title I leads assessed students virtually, which was interesting. It was the first time that they had ever done that. We see that sixty-nine percent of the kindergartens, kindergarteners for that year were identified as being, reading on track. Compared to this year, where we have seventy-four percent of the current kindergarteners were identified as reading on track, showing a five percent improvement between the two groups. That would be your apples-to-oranges comparison. Then we could also look at it apples-to-apples, and that's following a cohort over time. So if we looked at first graders last year in twenty-twenty-one, where forty-three percent of them were identified as reading on track, and then move to them as second graders now in twenty-one, twenty-two, we can see that sixty-four percent of those students are now reading on track. So while we're required to assess students at the start of the year, we use the same tool to provide continuous support and reassess at the end of the year. So what you're seeing in this chart is both the initial reading status and the end-of-year performance for kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, again, over time. So we see, again, looking at the, the groups for our kindergarten students last year, where we started, where sixty-nine percent of them were identified as reading on track, we can see that we had fewer students in that same cohort, fifty-five percent of them, who were, who remained on track throughout the year. Compared to this year's cohort, we started off with seventy-eight percent of the incoming kindergarteners on track. And while we had more students tested at the end of the year, we maintained that seventy-eight percent rate. We're again looking at first graders. It also helps explain when we're looking at the, the previous slide in terms of the, looking at the cohort from kindergarten twenty-twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two, is first graders. Also explains like that, that drop in performance. We can see how the impact of online instruction and the in-and-out of hybrid instruction may have impacted them. And just the challenge with teaching phonics and reading online.
Allison, looking at the chart on page twenty, so this one, would we also be able to assume then, if you're looking at the year-end level of kindergarten at eighty-four percent, and then you look at the first grade initial status at seventy-four percent, that that's summer learning loss?
I, I wouldn't want to draw that conclusion only because we, we didn't necessarily see it in the other grade levels. Right, I mean, not grade levels, in the, in the other years, all right? So we actually don't see that loss from twenty-one to twenty-two. We see an increase between the end of the year kindergarten to the beginning of the year first grade. So, so that may be a factor, but I wouldn't want to label that as the, as a key component without going back and looking at that cohort of students and what may or may not have happened. Now, I will say that what last year was the first year that we had Tiger Camp.
That's what I was gonna say. And the goal of Tiger Camp was to
Correct, right, was bring the great students, have that connection, build the social connection.
Right.
Could be, but I couldn't say with one hundred percent certainty.
Alz?
Yes, sir.
How does the, remind me the name of the provider of the test?
Acadia?
It is Acadiance, yes.
How does that line up with the state test in terms of results? So for instance, last year, sixty-eight percent of third graders, no, sorry, that was initial. So at the, at the end of the year, how is, how is it in terms of predicting?
So we actually don't use Acadiance Reading for predicting performance on the state test. And you'll notice here, even with the end of the year, we don't assess all third graders because that is that, like, that transition year, so they begin the state test. We use NWEA MAP as a stronger predictor for Ohio State testing performance. And because I don't have the numbers right here in front of me, I can't speak specifically to third grade. But Superintendent Kirby and Dr. Gould, at the close of the school year, held meetings with all of the school leaders to review their information. And we were looking at the connection and the correlation between MAP performance and OST performance. And we did see some strong correlation.
Only thing I would say, this is imperfect, so please don't quote me. But pre-COVID, the last data on the state report card for third grade was like, literacy was like sixty-two percent or sixty-five, something like that. And so you can kind of see when you look at the, like, if you look at BOY data for in seventeen, eighteen, which would be, I think, that class. It's like, you know, so we, we're kind of playing at six, seventy, sixty. So I, I don't think it, I mean, it's definitely a different test, you know, it's standardized. It's not a teacher, you know, going through all those different pieces with the students. But, you know, one thing we'll talk about is I think we think we're positioned well for the third grade goal in five years, so. But, yeah.
That is a definite takeaway. We can see, like, even with, lost my train of thought. Oh, so like the highlight is that each cohort, each class, first grade, second grade, and third grade, those students are coming in stronger than they did last year. All right, so we've, we, we know COVID had a significant impact on students and their learning. Significant impact on our staff as well, and having to adjust to different learning models and, you know, working with students as they were absent for chunks of time and then coming back in. But one of the, the great celebrations again is that even with all of those challenges, and we're gonna have some, some more highlights here, I apologize.
That's okay, you guys are highlighting all the takeaways.
Students are coming back in stronger than, than, than before.
No, that's fine. So as shared, some of the takeaways, we've talked a little bit about the kindergarten on track and just what we're seeing with their increase over the last year's cohort. We are, look, the overall increase for the district went up to sixty-five percent. We're also looking at our early adoption cycle, where we are really previewing materials to really help us with that ensuring of the continuity of instruction, making sure that, that we can fill in those gaps where we need to. And overall, as Superintendent Kirby has already stressed, that we are definitely, with us being at sixty-five percent, we're definitely on track to meeting our hundred percent goal that we have set for our strategic plan for twenty-twenty-six. Some of the challenges that we have seen is really about getting students, students to do school again. Getting them re-engaged, getting them to be socially, you know, working together, those type of things. Absences has definitely impacted that. And then also with them not being there in the early literacy, we've talked about being online, being hybrid. There are gaps that are there in phonics, phonemic awareness, decoding comprehension, just not having that routine and those set things that they have to do at the grade level. Looking at piloting our curricular resources, we pushed that to quarter two so that staff would not have to worry about starting off with using new materials. We wanted them to start off with things that they already know and then move into some of our pilot materials, getting to know students, getting back into those routines. And creating time and space is, is a challenge with having teachers being able to collaborate like they normally would with all of the attendance things that happen with us this school year as well.
And let's not forget that, you know, the vast majority of the school year was with masks on. And for youngest learners, I think that was really a challenge for them as far as literacy and phonetics.
Yes.
And being able to hear.
Yeah. The kiddos I was working with at Boulevard were hampered by masks until when the masks became optional within like two weeks. And this is just like the eight kids I saw on a regular basis. Within two weeks, all of a sudden, we could do our, our short vowels. It was like, yes! I was so excited for it.
Because I can see your lips.
Right, and it's like, and, and then they could, I could see what they were doing, and they could see what I was doing. And that made all the difference.
Right, and anecdotally, I've heard that from parents that have special ed children, that masks were really difficult for their learning. It was better to be in person, no doubt.
Yes.
But that was just one other hurdle that students had and staff had.
Slowly, slowly, we can get rid of most of those problems. Especially if we can mandate vaccination. But that's not the topic of this conversation.
So, I mean, going back to slide twenty and looking at the initial status versus the end of the year, I'm, I'm pleased to see that we've got some numbers that indicate that, you know, people are moving in the right direction, which, which is great. When it comes to our strategic plan and how it gets reported out to the community and knowing that there's state data, knowing that there's our data, knowing that you have MAP tests versus the Acadia, Acadi-
Acadiance.
Acadiance data. I mean, what's the standard? I mean, I, again, don't need to have the answer right now, but I'd like to know what standard we're gonna use when we do these measurements that matter. And, you know, pick something that's meaningful. And I, I say that because I, and, and Dan even alluded in one of the measurements earlier this evening. I mean, the, the requirements and the stuff we get from the state don't necessarily align with the, the needs in our, in our kids. It almost needs to be our measurement, our benchmark, but it's gotta be consistent over, over the life of the strategic plan. So I'm curious to see, I mean, are you using MAP data? I mean, and why versus this other data? And why does this mean that our kids have to take two separate sets of tests, which we don't want to over-test our kids? I know the MAP data is critical for in-classroom use, and our teachers use that. So again, I'd like to just learn a little bit more about that. I know that's related, but not on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, and I'm glad you raised that. I don't think we've thought necessarily about Acadiance and measurements that matter, but we probably should because we don't have like MAP for kindergartners. But this is our first indication of like how kids are lining up in terms of being literate, you know, as young people in our district. And, you know, I think it's clear in this story that we're seeing positive movement for sure, that we want to, you know, build upon and learn from and use strategically. So we should, we should add that as we think through how we talk about what's happening with strategic plan.
Yeah.
Because I think it's also important that, you know, if, if our in-house numbers are showing seventy-four percent, but then our state test numbers come up fifty-four percent, people think we're cooking the books. And so I, I think it's important that we have, either, either be able to answer the why behind that discrepancy. And if the measure that we're using in house, we feel is more appropriate for our students long-term, that these are the skills we care more about than the skills the state is, is reporting, then that's, that's fine. But I think that we need to be very prepared for that conversation. And we need to decide also, is that a conversation that's worth having? Or do we just align, do we just use instead MAP tests, which we do feel are more predictive and will show a more uniform dataset to the community?
We, we appreciate that feedback. And, and it is one of the reasons why we look at both beginning of the year and end of the year for Acadiance, because that is not required, and it does allow us to see that within-year improvement. So we'll work on, again, as Mr. Pashar indicated, like, right, standardizing that what the reporting looks like and being clear about what we're required to do versus what we, the additional pieces that we do that give us more information about where our students are and what they know and what, what the impact of instruction is having.
And as far as RIMPs go, those are based on MAP? Or the, are we using this to determine the, whether or not a kid is, a RIMP is a reading improvement plan?
Monitoring plans are based on the reading status of students, which is based on Acadiance reading.
So we're using Acadiance for that? Okay, cool. That's good to know.
And so some of our literacy next steps, as we think about this, we are in the process of our ELA, English Language Arts Adoption. That work began in spring of twenty-two and will continue into the upcoming school year. We want to start to look at how we use our universal screeners and district assessments. And when we're talking about universal screeners, this is exactly what Dan was talking about, how we use NWEA MAP, how we use Acadiance and all of those things, and, and the messaging behind that along with our district assessments. We really want to make sure that we are supporting schools in using formative and summative data so that it really helps them to inform the instruction, the planning, the collaboration that needs to happen for them, and really addressing the needs of students. And we will continue to provide professional development through our district days that we have, our quarterly grade-level meetings, our department liaison meetings with staff. And also, as a prime example, is looking at our district day-to-day. We will have that again in the upcoming school year. Definitely communicating with our families, what does this mean for my child? What the, you know, what am I mastering? What are they actually assessing? What should they be assessed on? And also to continue to look at our ELA interventions and some supports. They are really teaching staff members how to use Study Island, which is available for both elementary and secondary. They both have ELA and math components as part of them to help support what is happening in the classroom. This year, we weren't able to really get our tutoring up like we wanted to because of COVID. So, so really to use our ESER funds to get tutors back into our schools to help support our students during those intervention times. And also to really look at this from the tiered support levels that we've talked about with attendance, looking at that in our ELA practices as well. As we move into the next area of looking at course completion and grades, still looking at the same strategic plan goal, but also looking at now the strategy about how teachers and staff members share how students are mastering the courses and the performance measures that they're receiving.
Thank you. So this is the final area that we're going to be reviewing. And we're gonna look at course grades earned by students in three areas. So reading, which we'll see for students in grades third, fourth, and, or grades three, four, and five. English Language Arts, which is a combination of English reading and, or reading and writing in the upper grades, and then mathematics. So I'll go through that one more time. We've got reading specifically, it's gonna impact grades three, four, and five. We've got English Language Arts, grades four through high school, and mathematics, grades three through high school. So to help us place the marks in context, you'll see the grade distributions for this school year, twenty-one, twenty-two, and last school year, twenty-twenty-one. So this is gonna help in two ways. So this is going to help in two ways. It helps to see the changes from one year to the next, so comparing '21 to '22, and then changes within the same school year again, so we can see any changes that happen based on new learnings or adjustments that were going on in school. So each slide is labeled, you'll see school year 2021 or school year 21, '22. But those, the slides for school year 2021 have a light yellow background. And that's just because they can start looking the same, so that's one way to distinguish them. One other note before we get into the slides is that last year, elementary grading was different. We transitioned them from trimester grades to quarter grades. And then given the remote start, teachers felt like they needed more time to collect information about where students were, so they only reported out report card grades twice, once in second quarter and once in quarter four. So you'll see slight differences as we're looking at them, and I'll remind you of it as we actually take a look.
Is that a schedule that we're going to keep, the quarters?
So we are keeping the quarter rotation for the elementary level. So that puts all the levels, elementary, middle, and high school in the same reporting pattern.
That's exactly where I was going.
Yes.
Because I remember the confusion about whether you were on trimesters or semesters and quarter, yeah, okay.
So first up, again, we can tell from the, the light colored background that this is the slide for the 2021 school year. It's reflecting elementary reading, which again, only impacts grades three, four, and five. So what do we want to see? We want to see like a stair step down. So a higher concentration of grades issued in the A, B, C range and fewer in the failure range.
What does T stand for? That's trimester?
That was our, our adjustment. So it, it, the T was the, was used for the trimester. However, for here, it does represent like quarter two and quarter four.
Got it. Okay.
So this is the highlight when thinking about 2021. We do see in comparison to the second quarter, we do see a reduction in the, in the percentage of grades of F for reading. Now looking at '21, '22. So we see a distribution similar to the start of the 2021 school year. And as the year continued, we see more of that stair step down pattern.
What does the star column mean? I was wondering about that.
So the S stands for satisfactory and the star is typically used for progress reports to indicate, so the teacher can make a comment, to give the parent more information about what the grade reflects. So one of the things that we've identified through conversations with school staff and the work of the grading task force is that when it comes to report card grades, we're actually going to remove the asterisk and remove the satisfactory piece. So we have consistent marks across all of the levels.
And then FI is failing, complete, I assume?
Correct. And the F would represent a failure and an I would be incomplete, which means the, the teacher wanted more time to, or was to give the student more time to complete work or demonstrate mastery of the content. I will say that at the elementary level, they do not use the grade of incomplete. So for elementary, that does represent a failing grade. We have had conversations about whether or not the addition of incomplete would be appropriate for elementary students. So that is something that we may add for '22, '23.
And what's the P? C and P?
C and P, so P represents pass. So we know that it's, it's been an option. Sometimes it's used for our, our English learners who don't have a strong handle on the English language, but they have demonstrated some understanding of the content. So teachers will sometimes use a P to indicate performance. We also use it rather heavily and after the COVID closure in March of 2020. Again, not wanting to penalize students for the, the shift in instructional delivery in the learning environment, we saw an uptick in the use of a P for passing grades.
Okay. So it looks to me like in the previous year, we had 14% fail rate at the second quarter. And then in last year, it was down to 7% for second quarter, if I'm correct.
You are interpreting that, yes.
If I'm comparing the two years correctly.
Yes.
And we want to see those fail rates diminish, obviously.
So at the elementary level, they have a second grade for English, or really it reflects writing. So that, students in grades four and five at the elementary level will have a writing grade. So again, this represents 2021. And we can see an increase, just in this school year, of the number of As, Bs, and Cs that were, were distributed compared to the '21, '22 school year. We see more of that stair step pattern, meaning we have a higher percentage of students earning As, Bs, and Cs. So it, actually, the, the percentage ranges from 82 to 85% in this current school year. Last up for the elementary group is mathematics. So when we're looking at performance for 2021, we can see that approximately 71% of the grades in quarter two were in that ABC range. And then 79% were in the ABC range for the 2021 school year. When we advance to '21, '22, we can see that the percentage of As, Bs, and Cs is between 79% and 83%. So an increase and again, more of that stair step pattern. Now we shift to the middle schools.
Can I ask a question before you move on, just so I have a, just, it, it's a general question. So I know one of the things that our grading task force was challenged with is like coming up with really what an A is and make sure it's consistent across, I believe, all our buildings. So if you do the same level of work at Noble and you have equal student at Oxford, and an A is an A between two different schools. I mean, I think that was the, the ultimate goal. I mean, are we finding that the grades are consistent across our buildings? And I'm not asking for a report by building, because that's not going to work. But, I mean, there were some issues of getting everybody to a point where there was going to be some consistencies in the grades. And there was some concern at the time that the grades would fall.
So there's two different things that happen in the elementary schools. You have a standard-based grading report card and then you also have grades. So in your lower grades, you have a standard-based report card. So that is from grades K through three. You start to see grades in grades four and five. And I'm going to say across the United States, you will not have a consistency in, in grading when you look at an A. So that is one of the things that I have in the takeaways where we talk about that we're looking at, looking at some consistency in what we're saying an A is, a B is, at the, definitely at the elementary level, working with teachers around defining what that really looks like for them.
It's, it's a, it's a nearly impossible task that I'm not sure you, there's really a whole lot of, of value to. I mean, when you think about things like extra credit, some teachers give it, some teachers don't. Retakes.
Corrections, yeah.
Test corrections, retakes, you know, accepting late work. You know, it's, you, teaching is, is a, is a craft and it's an organic thing. And I think that we have to be careful not, what we don't want is, is too much. We don't want to have this expectation that people are, are teaching from a script or taking the passion that an individual teacher has out of it. And so I understand the drive, why it seems like it makes a lot of sense to have a more universal understanding of what an A is, what a B is, what a C is. But there are three teachers in my building who teach eighth grade American history and we do it entirely differently. However, that's a strength for our building because our guidance counselors know us and they know what our strengths are and they often will pair. This student needs a teacher that has really, a really solid regimented Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and that's exactly what this student needs desperately, thrives under. Ambiguity is not a strength for this kid. And then you have kids who, next week-ish, is exactly what they need. And so it's, it's, it's a hard, it's a, it's one of those things that I, I think we need to be careful what we're asking for.
And so let me, so the grading task force has developed administrative guidelines for our grading policy. And in those principles that we've outlined, some of the things that we talk about are making sure that our communication is clear in regards to how teachers are really grading, making sure that the student and the family also understand that. Making sure that our grades are, when I say consistent, that we are actually making sure that we report out the grade in a timely fashion so that students have feedback on that. There, like Dan shared, there are many teachers who do retakes. And where does that fit into those practices? So when we talk about consistent, those are kind of, kind of the things that we're working around, those type of principles as opposed to telling a teacher, the A is this and it should be, have all of these things in it. Because like he said, grading across the United States, I would tell you that A looks differently. It doesn't matter where you go.
Yeah. And of course, the same is true at the college level as well. It's like, there's no comparing.
I think it comes, comes down to knowing the material or not. And we know several private schools here in town have just given up on grades.
That's a trend, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, going standard-based, yeah.
And I can see a student where they start off strong. You see a lot of maybe Fs because they were out to lunch, literally. And then, but then they accelerated at the end of their classes and they learned the material and they had mastery of it. So does, so do you water down that and give them a C or do you give them an A? Because at the end of the class, they knew everything that an A student knew. So, and I know, so that's why when I look at this, I sort of look at it through funny colored glasses because really what does it mean for us? I mean, the, I mean, it's, it's an interesting discussion, I think, we're having. But really, when it comes to academic performance, are we really going to measure how many As we have? I mean, unless that A is definitely mastery, I mean, that, that's a number I would want to know about.
And that's what many of our teachers are working on, exactly what does mastery look like in that classroom? And so when they, when a student gets to mastery, then yes, then it's an A, a B, or a C. And so that's kind of how they're defining things. So a lot of our secondary schools are doing pilots around mastery learning. So we are looking at those pilots, that's really what the grading task force is and how we work through those practices and communication and making sure that students understand the feedback that they're getting. And at the elementary level, looking more so as those consistent things because they have standard-based grading all right, already. And so making sure that when we're putting the information in, like Allison said, get rid of the asterisk. What does that, you know, asterisk mean? We, we don't need that. Do we need an in-progress for when we're looking at students who need more time as opposed to putting in an incomplete? Those are some of the things that we're looking at as part of the task force work.
Okay. Good.
All right. So with that, we'll transition to middle school grades, looking at first the school year 2021.
So that was remote year?
Correct.
Yes. Pretty crummy looking.
Okay. And so we see the percentage of grades issued in the ABC range vary from 53% to 61% over the course of the school year compared to '21, '22. We see that percentage shift to 67 to 76%. And again, as Dr. Gould mentioned, we do have both middle schools working with their staff on different grading scales and having discussions about what their grades mean. In the area of mathematics, we see a similar, similar set of, of numbers. Grades of A, B, and C range from 51% to 63% in the '21 school year. And then that shifts to 59 to 68% in school year '22. Now, at the high school level, we see grades of As, Bs, and Cs ranging from 57% to 64% in the 2021 school year. And then in '22, we see As, Bs, and Cs from 64% up to 70%. In the area of mathematics at the high school level, we see ranges of 62 to 72% in school year 2021 for As, Bs, and Cs. And then in the '22 school year, we see a range from 70% of grades issued in the ABC range to 79%.
So the broad takeaway is in-person is better than remote.
Right? I mean, that's, we've, we've proven the obvious here.
Yes. In our takeaways, we've shared some of this already. When we look at our elementary reading and writing grades of an A in quarter four, we are seeing a percentage range between 82 to 85%. Our elementary math grades ranging there are from 79 to 83%. Secondary English, the percentage of As was higher in the first quarter for school year '22. And then we see an increase in grades of A, B, and C in secondary mathematics in school year '22 compared to '21. Some of the challenges, we've talked about before, looking at the available tutors to help us. And now we have academic success coaches and we'll have academic tutors with also some of our own staff tutoring as well. And really looking at filling in those skill gaps. As Malia has alluded to, it's better to be in-person than to be remote. Some of our next steps is that we are doing a math root cause analysis. We started this work and we will continue to do this up until August. So we'll actually be reporting out some results from our math root cause analysis because that's where we tend to see some of our lower grades. Continuing the grading action plan work, each school also has a grading action plan as well that they have started to build upon. Our grading task force, I talked about this, the consistency in the mastery learning and also the pilot work that is happening at our secondary schools. And for us to also take a review and a deeper look at any of our policies that are linked to promotion, remediation, and retention as it relates to academics and grading. And that concludes our presentation and we'll take any additional questions.
Well, thank you. This is very illuminating. I mean, yeah, remote is harder than in-person. So the percentage of students who are receiving Fs has consistently dropped for this current year compared to the remote year. Something is different from when I looked at yesterday and I, I can't quite remember what it was. Because something yesterday made me think there was a difference between reading and writing at the high school level, but maybe I was misreading the, the labels.
I don't know that you were misreading them. There may, I, I did make an adjustment. And so at the elementary level, we have two separate courses. There's a reading course and a writing course. At the middle school level, that's, it's combined into one under the, like, English Language Arts.
And at the high school as well?
Correct.
Okay. Because I remember thinking, well, yes, reading is obviously easier to do well in because it requires less work than writing, because writing requires you to hold a pen and actually put those words down, you know? And I was wondering about that. But, okay, thank you.
So when is our math curriculum up for, when are we revisiting the math curriculum? Because right now, the reading curriculum is... Because right now, the reading curriculum is, is, is up for grabs.
Correct. And then math will follow that.
Next year?
Yes.
So is it next year?
Yes.
So, I mean, it really... I mean, the, the mathematics numbers are just horrendous. I mean, even factoring COVID out of the equation, I mean, they're just horrendous. And it's great that number one takeaway I knew is you're looking at the, sort of a root cause, just to try to get a sense of really, you know, what's obviously the root cause, because if you can fix that, hopefully you can, you can solve other things. I mean, I think the numbers are so bad, it's the kind of thing that once you get that kind of data, we really should see it. I mean, I want to see it. I want to, I want to know what, what the action plan is to deal with it and if it means accelerating, you know, getting a new curriculum. I mean, if it's a curriculum issue, I mean, you know, maybe solving it that way or more, or throwing more resources into mathematics. I mean, I know reading's important, but math also is, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna see barriers. I mean, we, we want our, we want our kids to get into CTE programs, you know, college and career, and math is critical.
Yes.
And all that. If you're not in the right math class, you may not go to college. You may not be able to get a career tech degree. But that's a huge takeaway that, I mean, we, we've known that.
Middle school job.
We've got issues and it starts, I mean, and one of the things you can see from the numbers, it definitely starts in the middle school.
Yep.
Totally starts in the middle school. And, and maybe it's just the whole policy of, in the elementary school, we're so focused on this third grade reading guarantee, you know, cycles are taken away from math because the state has basically said, you know, reading is more important by the third grade, so we're throwing resources at that.
You're also starting to see variables, you're starting to see letters take the place of numbers. And so you're starting to need abstract reasoning in order to keep up with math in the middle school level, and the human brain doesn't develop at a really convenient, uniform rate. And so you have kids, one of them is sitting right here, who in seventh grade, I will never forget Milt Kalender, God bless that man, I had an argument with him in class, a full-blown argument. I'm like, Mr. Kalender, you're trying to convince me that X is four. X is not, X is not four, X is X. And then you expect me to believe that X is seven in the next. And, and he was so...
Pre-algebra didn't go so well, huh?
No, no. But he was so, he was so great because, I mean, I can like remember the classroom at Rocks where this throw-down went down. And he said, Heinz, you're gonna be fine. Your brain's just not there yet. There's nothing wrong with you. It'll come, believe me. And, and what I learned that day, swear to God, what I learned that day is that I suck at math. Because I...
You don't learn that in seventh grade.
Math teachers don't like when you say those types of things.
No. They didn't say it to me. I said it, oh, I hate it when my kids say it because I know firsthand, they're poisoning themselves.
Right.
But, but what I learned that day is that my brain wasn't where the people around me's brain was, and it did poison me. And so that's why, you know, when you say that it's a, it's, it's at the middle school level where these scores go off, we do need to remember that there's a giant shift in that at middle school level, abstract reasoning is required for those higher levels of math and for, for some kids, they're just not there yet. Plus, every gap that you have, and man, we are gap central right now because of COVID, those gaps begin to add up. And so we can talk about remediation, but remediation ain't gonna end. And, and so to me, one of the things that we need to be talking about as we're talking about math is, is really, you know, we have sixth grade math and seventh grade math. I think that we need to begin to think more and more about math that's not keyed in so much to a grade level, but having the math class a student is in meet the math ability that that student is at. And having maybe a more fluid way of moving kids around. I don't, we're all tempted to say up and down, I want to say around.
Well, what was the term that they used when my kids were in elementary school about math? Scaffolding, right? So we're gonna come back to it. We keep coming round and round, and each time you get to that concept, it's a little bit deeper or a little bit harder, or you're a little bit better able to grasp it than the last time. And so you're right, it is around and around, and you keep having to come back to certain
Yeah.
concepts until they finally get the light bulb.
That's the hope.
Yeah. Unless you're Dan Heinz in seventh grade.
I didn't learn math until I had to teach it, I swear.
Oh, goodness.
Good times.
You learn most things, right? But I, you know, these are the types of conversations that I'm sure are happening or will continue to happen in the Root Cause Analysis Committee. I do have to ask for board members. We need tutors next year, and we need everybody helping us to get them. We do have, I believe, Kaden's department has created or has a draft communication about our need, what people need to do, if they're interested, and I don't, Kaden, I don't know if you all want to add something here, but we need to get the word out, and we need everybody helping us because where we're posting it, you know, we're competing with other, we just, we have to use unorthodox ways to get staff in. So I don't think, I have ever asked you before to help me recruit staff members, but I'm asking you to help me recruit tutors. So we will get that to you, something you can share with colleagues, people who are interested in coming in to work across our elementary schools, middle schools, I think, even high school. Now, it's harder to get people who know math, right? Upper-level math, but they're out, but they are out there. So our goal is at least four per school. We think we can do it, but we're gonna need lots of help.
So have we reached out to Reaching Heights? I mean, they were very big at that at one point and...
Yeah, they still, and they do, they do the literacy tutor, tutoring, early literacy tutoring piece, so we do have that support at some of our schools. You know, some of it kind of depends upon, you know, interest, proximity to schools, like those kind of pieces too as well. That's one tool in our toolbox. We also need a separate tool in our toolbox. Couldn't get, you know, we were able to get some tutors hired, and trust me, the tutors that were hired, we're doing a lot of work in schools, but we need help.
So these, these paid positions, I guess that's...
These are paid positions.
So these are paid positions?
Yes. So we'll send you the information, something you can share out, you know, friends, family, civic institutions you are affiliated with, so we can get them, you know, get that process going.
Can we talk about this tomorrow?
We certainly can.
Yes.
That's a huge purpose.
Are we reaching out to our local universities as well?
Yes.
Because I know, like, even some of the schools have service hours, but if this was a paid position, they might want to do it. But I was gonna say, this, you know...
It could be more fun than, you know, scooping ice cream.
The way you learn math is by doing it?
Yeah.
And the only way our kids are gonna do it is by having tutors? I mean, that, that, this is gonna be key.
Yeah. I mean, we're looking at even local, you know, recent grads who are still in the area, who may have some time. I mean, we'll be looking at all different kinds of models to do it, but...
I'm hearing great things about Tiger Camp, because I get, I get the report every day when I pick a, a tutor up. And...
Wonder who that tutor is.
Yeah. He insists that there's really good work being done there by our staff as well as by our students. And so, that's good.
And what about our Alumni Foundation? Our Alumni...
That's another, right, that we can tap into, yep. So we'll bring info tomorrow for the city's meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you for inviting me. And we'll get information to you all too as well.
Good.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Gould and Ms. Burr, extra presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
In the midst of day, day-long interviews? Glad I know you've been in interviews all day.
Oh, please, you're interviewing some tutors.
There are, there are costs associated with tutoring. Can, do we have a way of making those palatable to people who are gonna come in and tutor?
Share what the compensation is with tutoring?
Because, so we're talking about BCI and, and fingerprinting and all that stuff. For those of you who don't know, it can, it can be expensive.
It, it's a bit of a pain to go through that process.
Yeah, so the compensation is $25 an hour for up to five hours a day, 25 hours a week. We are looking at reaching out to different universities, the churches, we're gonna bring flyers to, also to library. So we have a, we have a big plan to also have walk-ins in mid-July for all of our positions that are tougher to fill, especially tutors. So the goal is to have a, a group of tutors that are screened, ready to go, and administrators come back August 1st and just allow them to pick and choose the ones they feel are the best for either math, social, well, English, whatever the need is for the building.
It seems to me, Paul, that that may also be a pool of potential substitute teachers.
Sure. Sure. We want to reach out also to our former graduates, you know, to find paraprofessionals and move them into the Grow Your Own program. So we really have a lot of positive things we think we can do with some of the programs we're already doing here.
Do we have connections with our retirees?
Oh, we do.
Because that's another great...
And I think now that COVID is kind of winding down, I think more and more retirees will want to get back into the buildings as opposed to the last three years, so...
Yeah, I get it.
Absolutely.
Lifecycle.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The gentleman, the retiree who sends out that notice of what's happening with CHUH retirees? I can't remember who's that, they have a picnic, yeah.
I just saw him.
Yeah. Because he sends out a newsletter, so we put that in there.
Yeah, I just saw him in Columbus.
Was he wearing his vest?
I don't remember, I was nervous.
More than likely.
All right, we're moving on.
All right.
Next presentation.
Next. Well, no worries, it's getting late and I am all about brevity, as you know, so I will try to keep it, try to keep it straight and to the point. So again, want to thank the, the board for moving this meeting to tonight from, from the previous weeks. It really gave us some time to get some things done that needed to be done and get all these numbers together that we needed to get together. Wanted to, first and foremost, thank also the finance department, the finance team, you know, who have worked hard on a lot of this. It's, it's kind of funny, and in particular, our Assistant Treasurer, Eric Soltes, who kind of facilitates a lot of this budget process. You know, you'll remember that 80-plus percent of any school district's budget is salary and benefits. So in truth, you have more or less approved the majority of the budget up to this point through your approval personnel items as we go through the year for, for the next school year. So this is a much smaller part of the budget that we're talking about tonight, but it actually takes us a significant, significant amount of work to do. In fact, we have about 11,000 lines of budget that fall up under, you know, a single number that we all, we asked you all to approve. And, you know, we have to pay attention to that detail on our end, which sometimes makes us the bad guys in finance because, you know, we have compliance, we have legislative issues, we're the ones who have to say, because when the audit comes in, or when the auditors come in to do the audit, they're the ones who, you know, even, even the smallest detail of something spent out with the wrong account can, you know, result in a, in a finding and, and you have all kinds of issues with that. So, so again, we want to thank the, the finance team, thank Eric for all his hard work on this in particular, and just want to give you a brief presentation here on kind of the budget process for the non-salary items that we have done. So as Dr. Gould mentioned, you know, we, we have a strategic plan and we are obviously focused on Goal Five for this presentation. So very quickly, overview, we just want to do a quick introduction, which I've already started to some degree. We're gonna do the budget process, show you the budget document, show you how that ties to the five-year forecast, and then ask for your approval of the appropriations for fiscal year 23. So remember, and I'll use the words budget and appropriation interchangeably, but technically, the appropriation is your legal authority to spend. So that is you approving us at the fund level to spend $108 million in the general fund. Underlying that appropriation are all of the budgets and all the details that I was talking about. So although I use those words interchangeably, there is a, a little bit of a distinction there. Coding, so again, we talked about there are many, many lines of code, many dimensions of, of the code. You'll remember from our three things at the last regular board meeting, one of the dimensions is fund. And so that is the, the level of appropriation that we ask you to approve at. So a fund is a, is a pot or a bucket of money that is used for a particular purpose. And, and generally, we're focused on the general fund, although your grants, your permanent improvement, self-insurance, you can have all different kinds of funds. But there are all these other dimensions of the code that we pay attention to, that the state pays attention to, and, you know, depending on what, what our needs are and what the cost benefit is of tracking funds at a certain level. We kind of weigh that out each year, but, you know, you see one dimension here of the budget, the budget units, which, you know, is kind of broken down by department or, or type of, of expenditure. But we also have, you know, we track expenditures by operational unit, so by building. We track it by instructional level, by subject in some cases, by object, which is what we're familiar with, so that's how you know if it's a salary or a benefit, or materials and supplies, or those kinds of categories. So all these different dimensions come together and we'll use them to varying degrees, and you can even drill down within each dimension. So say an 1100 function means instruction. So that's how the state knows you have an instructional expenditure versus another type. But you might have an 1110, which is a certain type of instruction versus an 1130, and then you might even drill down further than that and have an 1111 or 1112. So depending on, you know, you have a whole USAS manual, which we kind of touched on with the last three things, to say that there's this uniform school accounting system that we use, you have your fund, but you also have all these other dimensions that we're budgeting to. So the budget process, just in a nutshell, and this is kind of, you know, Eric in particular spends a lot of time facilitating this process. We send out information to the budget managers. We, we really kind of focus on a zero-based budgeting model. So rather than, say, you have X, we prefer to say, okay, so you, you need to really look at your department needs, you need to look at your building needs, and tell us what you need, and kind of put your numbers together that way. We do provide trend data, we do provide, you know, past history so that people can see what they've spent. And once they're done, you know, we do review it and make sure that it fits within the five-year forecast. If it doesn't, we have some conversations. If there's an increase, always happy if it's a, if it's a decrease. But if it's an increase, we'll talk to Liz about that and see if there's another place we can pull money from overall.
In general, the budget managers are building principals and heads of departments?
Correct, yes. Exactly. So once those budget managers complete the budget and send, and Eric has actually put this, made this whole process electronic, which is very nice. And so, you know, you have all of this being fed out and then fed back into a, a document and a system. Then he spends a, a significant amount of time compiling the budget, and we have a lot of changes that will happen throughout that process. We'll, upon our review, we'll see where, you know, some obvious issues where people are trying to code things in the wrong places, so we have to go through and do all of that. We go through, you know, if she approves of that, or if there are other places we can, we can find money for that. And try to work some things out through grants. The ESSR money has, has been great because we've been able to actually take the ESSR money and bless you, look at different things, and for example, know that we, you know, there's no budget in the budget document you'll see for summer school. That's because I, we're asking you to approve the general fund budget, but Tiger Camp is being paid for from ESSR. So, so that's why you'll, you'll see some changes in the budget document from previous iterations of that, but that's what, that's really what that's about. And then again, ultimately, the board approval, which is what we're asking you for tonight. So the, the fiscal 23 general fund budget document is linked, it's out under board docs, and it's, it's in significant detail, and you've seen this before, and I'm, I don't want to get, you know, too much into the weeds on it, detail, and you've seen this before... want to get, you know, too much into the weeds on it detail, and you've seen this before, and I'm, I don't want to get, you know, too much into the weeds on it, but it's there for your review. And, you know, you'll see that in addition to an executive summary, we have the building budgets, again, non-salary, so it's all those materials and supplies and other types of things by building, by department. And then we do have numbers, you know, in the final analysis that include salaries and benefits and others, but, you know, the board members, awards and whatnot, so all of that's in there, along with some references to board policies around budgeting and some other things. But then you're going to see each building's budget laid out exactly as it comes into us, so, you know, you're going to see some budget line items that don't have anything at all, others that you, you might look and see things repeated, but that's because, like for example, at Boulevard, you see many accounts for general supplies, but they're broken down by, by instructional level. So first grade, second grade, third grade. So it's not obvious to, you know, anyone from the budget unit, but I can look at this and see that the numbers are different based on that. So that's really what that's telling you there. And just want to scroll down here to the end and make notes. So you'll see that the total general fund budget is $108,744.58. So keep an eye on that number because I want to tie that out for you and show you that that's what we're coming to at the end of it all with the five-year forecast. Again, we just have an example here embedded right in the slides for the Delisle Option Center, showing what that budget submission was by them, what it looks like, again, for non-salary items. So you see, you know, just under $10,000 in non-salary types of things like professional development, supplies, periodicals, those kinds of things. So this is the five-year forecast history, and tonight, earlier in the meeting, you approved the, the June five-year forecast. So I'm pulling that up right now here just for you to take a look and see that for fiscal '23, and remember, this was one of the three things that we talked about before, too, fiscal year '23 is the school year coming up, so that's the school year that's '22, ending in June 30th of '23. Your total expenditure number is $108,744.58, right here. So that is the expenditure number for appropriations that we're asking you to approve tonight, consistent with the five-year forecast. And what we also want to make sure that you note is that with that number and with that approval, we continue to have a positive ending cash balance through fiscal year '26, which has kind of been the goal of what we've been doing in terms of stretching out that levy cycle.
So we're still on track
Correct.
To stretch our three-year levy to a five-year levy?
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank God for ESSER.
Yes, indeed. And that's, you know, it in terms of kind of the process, again, like I said, this is a long, arduous, a lot of communication and a lot of detail, but, you know, and in the end, what it boils down to is this one page of appropriations that we asked the board to approve, saying that we will not spend over these amounts in each of these funds. And so you'll see your general fund at $108,744.58, which is the number that we've been talking about that's in the budget detailed document in the five-year forecast. But then you'll see your numbers in there for the other funds, too, in terms of bond retirement, permanent improvement, you have food services, and all those state and federal grants have a separate, are a separate fund and therefore require a separate appropriation.
Now salaries, I see benefits there at O24, and the salaries are in general fund.
So salary and benefits both are in general fund. In fact, salary and benefits are embedded in most of these funds, but the benefits that you're asking about, Malia, are, that's actually our self-insurance fund.
Ah, health insurance, got it.
Yeah, so it's a separate fund where we have to account for how well our self-insurance funding is doing overall. So we charge benefits to the, to the general fund and every other fund, then we do journal entries to move those costs into the O24 fund.
Right.
Then we pay Medical Mutual out of the O24 fund for claims and see where we end at the end of all that. So, so there's some, that's kind of a crossover and there's some accounting, but again, it's a separate fund for a separate purpose.
So that 20 million is what we anticipate being the
Correct.
The correct amount, but there'll be some fine tuning as things happen?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, because you can't really predict exactly what's going to happen.
Right, but we would expect that you're, you're telling, what, what you're doing with this authorization is we will not exceed $20 million in spending on that fund. And if we find that we would need that, that's when periodically we will come to the board with appropriation adjustments. And, and when you see those, that's typically us having reviewed a fund and seeing that we're, you know, something needs to change there.
Where does, oh, I see the permanent improvement.
Yeah, so Fondo O3 is your permanent improvement fund, so you have the 2.8 million there. That's one that once we get the levy in, there are, there are some debt repayments out of that, once we see how much cash we carry over from the previous year, then we sit down with George. And so that number sometimes changes pretty significantly based on what projects, the timing of projects, and, you know, what, what that might look like. But for now, as a placeholder, we have the 2,851,400.
Like, right now, he just got hit with the big SMARTboard or projection board projects, which is a giant chunk out of the permanent improvements, which is a blessing that we have the permanent improvement fund for that.
It is, yes.
But it did, it did force us to postpone some other projects,
Mm-hmm.
Which is just what, what we do.
Absolutely.
So just for clarity's sake, when you sort of add up all the appropriations, that's not, we're not spending that amount of money
That's correct.
Per year.
Yes.
And I think that's what the community needs to understand, because the monies in these funds move around between different pieces. And I think the best example was the self-insurance piece.
Correct. So yeah, that's a good point, Jim, because a lot, and as you know, over the years, you know, a lot of times, particularly during levy times, people say, my gosh, your budget's $157,540. No, it's not. You know, that is, that's, there are some duplications, as you said, and also, those are a lot of state and federal grants and, and debt payments and things for specific purposes. So when we're talking about our actual operating budget and the budget that is in the five-year forecast, that is your general fund, 001.
Yeah, because people are going to take the 100, the 150-some million, and they're going to divide it by the number of kids we have, and they say, did you know this is what they spent?
They're spending this much money per student.
And that's not how fund accounting works.
Correct.
We've heard that before, yeah.
And also, we cannot legally operate in the red. We, it is illegal for us to operate in the red, and so we have to, to, you know, overestimate what we are likely to use, you know, because we're in, you know, for instance, we're in the middle of the pandemic. Our insurance costs have no doubt gone up.
Right.
But
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, so, so you overestimate in your budget so that you're sure to have enough.
To a degree, you're right. And I, and I, you know, for example, fuel is one that, you know, is difficult to predict right now and what that's going to look like. So the, the one thing to remember, though, is that, again, the majority of your budget is your people. And you do know with some level of certainty what that's going to be. You're right, Dan, though, like the insurance costs, you know, we, we have predicted what could be a 5% increase in just premiums in general come January, that's in the assumptions of the forecast, but it could be wildly different from that. So those are those things, and that's why the board approves the five-year forecast monthly, when really you're only statutorily obligated to do it twice a year, but at least here, because then it's in front of you, you're seeing it, and then we try to adjust as those things become known. So you're seeing that adjustment along the way, which is good, because I don't know a lot of districts that, in fact, I don't know any that do that. So, you know, we're, I think we're unique in that sense that the board is, you know, keeping the five-year forecast front and center and, and making sure that, that nothing goes off the rails with that, and that as these things become known, we're, we're reflecting that in the forecast and you're able to make long-term decisions based on what you see.
So I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I mean, what's really frustrating, especially when we went through all the gyrations last year with fair school funding, which we know is not necessarily fair school funding, but we have to make these commitments today for the entire school year next year, okay? And we've got limits, so, and so we need to count on what the state is going to give us. And last year is a prime example of, we didn't know, but we had to make Yeah, we had to make these decisions nearly eight to nine months even before we heard from the state. And that's incredibly difficult when the state's man, mandating what you can do with the money, how it has to be spent, and then all of a sudden, they don't tell you what you have to spend.
Yeah.
I also get
Makes it a little tricky.
Yeah, it does. And then I also get upset because we, we hear this over and over and over again about how it's implied, we're not audited, you need to do this other kind of audit. And the amount of, I mean, we, we see the audit reports, okay, and we know the level of detail. I mean, they'll come up with a, with a, with a payment that you've made to an employee that they can't find the credit card receipt, although they have the statement for their credit card, but they don't have the actual receipt, and it's forty-seven dollars. And, you know, we know the level of detail, that the auditor comes in, when they audit the books, the Perkins money, all this stuff gets audited over and over and over again. And they, they look at all the detail, I mean, they look at everything. And for the most part, we have a clean audit. And, you know, except for little things. And when you have a budget this size with this amount of money that flows, you are going to see some small imperfections, nothing glaring, nothing big. And, and that's what we see. And, you know, you, you've won awards from the auditing, as much as I get upset with the, with, with that State Department, you yourself has won awards, this, this district has. So I'm proud of that.
Well, and to, to your point, I absolutely agree. You know, it's, it's, it is, is frustrating to me because as a former auditor myself, you know, I worked in public accounting, I was with the Laitentouche before I came to the district. You know, we had this concept called materiality. So if we were looking at $108 million budget, we wouldn't be looking at every nickel and dime, but it's a different situation when you're looking at, when you're using, you know, reviewing public dollars and tax dollars. And so there's a different standard. Still, I might argue that, you know, again, in an, in an operation this size, some things aren't material. But that's why we have to look at that, such level of detail that we do, and a lot of times, we come off in the finance department as, you know, the negative ones are the ones that are saying, you can't do this, or you're doing this, you know, not doing this right. We're really trying to approach that this year more from an educational-type perspective to really get out in front and do some training with some people who, we've had a lot of change in the organization and just trying to get people to, to come in to, to understand what that means or what we're looking for, what has to happen. But you're right, there's an annual audit every year. We've had an unqualified opinion every year, you know, and I think every year that this district has been existed
Good, that's a good audit.
And that's a good, that's a good audit. That means that you
Unqualified is what you want.
You know, everything is materially, materially in compliance, there are no issues. And then, to your point, last year, we had the Otter State Award with Distinction, which that means even to the level of detail they looked, there was nothing, they found no issues whatsoever. So, but you're right, that's not common because you're going to, you're going to have those little things that crop up, but, but in general, yes. And every entity is required to have an audit every year, and we do, and we, you know, it's, it goes well, and we're happy with that.
Yeah, so, so there's going to be a school board election in a year and a half, and we're going to hear people that are running that are going to say, the district's not transparent. I am going to, I am going to force transparency. And, and I want everybody in the community to understand where we were 10 years ago. And this kind of document that you prepare for us and the updated monthly financials that everybody gets, that's public, it's, it's, I mean, we're on the leading edge of transparency. I mean, people are going to say, well, you're not using the, the state checkbook, the electronic checkbook. There's a lot of controversy with that, and very, very school districts and very full, very few municipalities actually use it. We're not going to talk about that right now, but I mean, this is one of those things where the data is here. I mean, people ask you, well, how much are you spending on, on attorney's fees? This is the budget, okay? This is the budget for it, and it's been pretty consistent, year after year after year. And when you look at the amount that you've budgeted for, considering the fact that we're a hundred-plus-million-dollar organization, it's not a big number, so.
I also want to point out that, you know, all of the work that, that we have just presented of your department and your people, and, and that, as you really well described, that reaches into every one of our school buildings, working basically in compliance in order to build this report for these audits. We cannot miss the opportunity to point out that 25% of Ohio's education budget is going to private schools, and they have absolutely zero of what we have just described. They receive 25% of Ohio's tax dollars dedicated to educating the children of Ohio, and they have zero compliance, they have zero oversight, they have zero audits. We have no clue, taxpayers are entirely blind to what in the end that 25% of the education budget is actually being spent on.
Intentional.
Oh!
Intentional, they don't.
Yeah, they didn't learn from ECOAT.
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, here we have ECOAT in Ohio, the biggest fraud of, of charter education, and they've learned nothing, they've intentionally learned nothing, because, well, one could argue that it has something to do with all those donations to their campaigns.
So this 69-page document is basically a summary of where every penny goes, if you know how to read the budget units.
Correct.
And that's the secret code that most of us don't understand.
Right.
But you have a three-ring binder there.
We do, and, and actually, this, you know, this is all out online, too, under the Otter State's website, yeah, but, yes. So, and again, we, we, when we, when we present that, and we presented it in the way that we did to you, we do it by object, which is one of the dimensions, because it's the one that makes the most sense, I think.
Easier to understand.
Yeah, because, you know, I can see you're spending this on supplies and this on materials and, but all those various dimensions, you know, if you want to see, you know, third grade Oxford, you know, what they're, we can run reports in that way to, to do that kind of thing, so.
Scott, can you explain under the general fund, what is special trust fund? That was like a number seven that
Oh, Fund Seven, yes. So those are, although there are far fewer of those than there used to be, but those are grants.
Okay.
So, you know, we've, we've really intentionally tried to move most of that off to the Alumni Foundation, because, you know, we would have various, you know, alumni who would pass, and their estates would leave money to the district, and so then we would be required to account for that in this, in each, so within the Fund Seven, we would have a special cost center for each and every one of those kind of mini-grants or trusts. And, you know, there are a lot of, but then they're subject to all the same restrictions and requirements that we are as a public entity, so, and a lot of times, the donors don't like that. So, you know, it just, it was much easier and there was much more flexibility and fewer hoops to jump through to have the Alumni Foundation manage those kinds of things. It makes more sense. Anything else on that I can answer? I mean, and like I say, you know, at any time, if they're, you know, happy to, to sit down and kind of talk through that, any of the, any of the pieces and parts of this document, but hopefully, you know, in the way that we've kind of compiled and presented it, again, really appreciate, you know, the, the finance team and Eric in particular, when, you know, facilitating this and kind of putting it together, it's, it's a lot of time. It's a lot of time and a lot of work, and, and they do a good job with that, for sure. And so with that, we do need your approval tonight of the, of the permanent appropriations.
I just want to make one comment
Sure.
Because I'm sure people will notice that there are, there's significant variation between elementary buildings and what their budgets look like, and that's the result of zero-based budgeting. So rather than telling each principal, you have $5 for next year, figure out what you're going to do with it, we're asking each principal to say, I want XYZ, no, I want ABC, no, I need DEF.
We do.
And that's why those numbers vary.
But it also varies based on, you know, I, I think there's a, when they, when they look at their trend data, I, I don't think everyone always looks at the zero-based as, as look at their trend data, I, I don't think everyone always looks at the zero-based as, intentionally as we might like. So a lot of times, they will use the trend data to-
And use that to project for next year.
And it's based on, and, and so that's really an allocation based on students. So you're, so some of the fluctuation you see there is based on enrollment at the various buildings.
But I'm just, because if you, if you take equity at its surface value, then you could say, well, wait a minute, why don't they all have the same amount of money? But the point is that they have different enrollments, and the principals have different priorities of where they want to spend money. And so I just want to say that out loud to make it clear, because there's, you know, there's variation there, and there are reasons for the variation. That's-
You're absolutely right. And it's, it is, it's actually an effort to provide equity versus those numbers being equal across the buildings.
Right.
Well, you may have more staff members, for example, at Monticello than you have at Rockspur, which is not counted into the equation, for example.
That's true, because, because this is not, this does not include salaries, right.
Yeah, so there's, there's many dimensions to this.
And even the allocation of your staff, you know, your grant-funded staff, and, and what, you know, your buildings that you might be targeting with various programming. That's, that is also a difference that you'll see that's addressing equity.
So you need a motion from us to approve the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 23, is that correct?
Yes, please.
May I have a motion, please?
I motion to approve the temporary appropriations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there anything else that we want to say about this?
Please pass our gratitude on to Eric and the rest of the team as well.
Will do.
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously a huge amount of work, and that extra week makes a big difference for you being able to present something that's-
It did, so thank you again, appreciate it.
Yeah. So, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaynor. And now I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I motion we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and good night.